Seven o'clock, please rise for the lunch. Okay, any additions or corrections to the minutes? Very none of the motion to accept.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. The motion is to accept the financial report and payment of the bills.
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Michael. Hold it up close, please.
Okay, no amendments, sir?
No amendments.
Okay, Severn Trent, Ken?
Evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
I'd like to give you a brief update on the water wastewater facilities, open facilities for the month of December. I just first like to say that, you know, the weather's been not cooperating very well with wastewater treatment and water treatment. It's been very difficult these last couple of months. But we're hanging in there and we're making it all right. We're just fighting it, constantly fighting it. But anyway, I gave you a report for, it's got a lot of annual numbers on that. I wanted to share them with you for December. The, the report has the total pounds of nitrogen that the plant discharged for the year for 2013. And we ended up discharging 8,693 pounds of total nitrogen. And our permit limit was 37,000. So less than 7,000 we discharged. And on phosphorus, we discharged 324 pounds for the year and our permit allows 2,787. So the plant performed outstanding, outstandingly well in 2013. So we should be happy about that. One thing on that report, your report says the phosphorus for the month was averaged 0.6, that's a typo, should be .06 milligrams per liter, just so you know. .0, .6 and .06 is a big difference. So some other things that have been going on at the facility, I know, I know that town DPW has been fighting this cold and they've had numerous water breaks and we've had problems at the plant with freezing water lines as well. And, and we've really, it's probably one of the worst winters I've seen since I've been with you. I don't remember one this quite this, this cold. And it has definitely been having an effect on the wastewater process. And we're still in compliance, we're not having any non-compliance issues, but it's, it has been a struggle. So I just gotta let you guys know, like, some of the equipment doesn't work as well at being outside and it freezes and then, you know, it's, it's been pretty tough. Anyway, that's without, I guess that's the only good news I have, no, I'm just saying. But we're, we're just, we're hanging in there and I just can't wait for, for the weather to break, you know, I'm just, yeah, we're just tired of it.
We all are.
Yeah. So we had a interesting thing happen the other day. I, you probably know about it, that the, the race became blocked from the ice from, from Big L Creek, you know, they're coming into the raceway and we actually, we were, and of course, the surface water plant was operating and actually pulled the water level down into the race below this intake of the plant. And we contacted Lewis, this was, this was Thursday, I believe it was Thursday, let's pass Thursday, we contacted Lewis, then we got John, the snow, out there to free it off, to remove the ice, but it was, it was pretty, pretty scary at the, at the time, you know. You know, scary, but, you know.
War, worrisome.
Yeah, something we probably never realized before with the cold weather, oh, that will freeze up quick.
Fortunately, we had his, he had his cherry picker there to, to remove the blankets. So we were able to get back online and break away pretty much. We didn't lose any ground, fortunately. So it was something that we, that was just an idea of some of the things we've been dealing with, but it, it all ended up okay. So. So I really don't have anything else to talk about, unless you want to talk about more of the subjects.
Good. Any other questions, anyone? Okay. Thanks, Ken.
Want to compliment Ken and his team for putting up with the weather because it has been a struggle for him. It's, you know, it's a lot of equipment and stations and everything to monitor when you have bad weather. So compliments to team, his whole team. They did a good job. Twenty-six weeks to go.
Hanging it down.
Okay, Lewis.
Hanging with the good logs.
Guaranteed. First item on my agenda is the third amendment to the Severn Trent O&M contract. The board previously voted to send the contract to 2023. And this is the amendment to that contract that memorializes that extension to 2023 and additionally provides for a, a contribution of $200,000 by Severn Trent towards the influence stream to the Big L pump, pump station. And that will be amortized between 2018 and 2023 on a monthly basis, but that'll be their contribution for that project, which is very helpful, given the extent of that. We don't know the full cost yet, but we're hoping it will be within the $300,000 to $350,000 range. This is very helpful in that. I would recommend that the board authorize the mayor to sign the third amendment that memorializes the extension of the contract and the conditions that are set forth in that third amendment and exhibit.
Okay. I draw a motion to accept the third amendment to the agreement of Severn Trent.
So moved.
Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
I just have, I guess, just a little comment, I guess I wanted to make. Lewis, I know that, that, that contribution is a good contribution, but I'd like to know what, and I think I spoke to Steve about it earlier, would that be reflective in any type of savings towards the residents?
Will it save money for the residents?
Will it be reflective in their, in their actual, you know, the sewer rates and things like that that translate down?
It won't change the rate because the, the equipment was not put in, ever put in, it's being new. And because it's new and Severn Trent participating as well as the $110,000 from the county, probably a big contribution from us too, but it won't be significant as that.
But it could be adjustments. No, it won't be any adjustments, that's what I'm asking. Would it have some type of, would it have some type of effect towards it over the long period?
It won't affect the rates now. Thank you.
It won't affect the rates, but it'll affect our side because it's going to help us with the problems that we've been having from the detention center as far as there's stuff being thrown down there and of course, what we have at the plant, that's kind of destroyed some of the rinders and stuff like that and costing, costing us quite a bit of money. So that will help us save money. Okay.
The next item I have is a proposal by Intech Engineering out of Redmond, Pennsylvania. Intech was recommended by Severn Trent, they're very familiar with this engineering firm for doing work in the area that, in the areas that they operate, in Pennsylvania in particular. Subsequent to the receipt of the proposal, we met with Chris Hahn, he's a professional engineer with Intech and we and I, Steve, Dan, Mark and Ken and Carl Klein all had a very lengthy discussion with them about the project. They have submitted a revised proposal to include the specifications and engineering required for the installation of this equipment along with some construction management. Not to exceed twice under this proposal, $15,500, which is probably a pretty good fee. What we're going to do to save additional money is, once the specifications for the screen have been refined and finalized, we will send out bids directly to three, two to three vendors, depending on what they give us. And we will purchase the equipment directly. And then, once that equipment is delivered to the plant, we will contract with the installer to put it in. That way, we don't have to mark up on the equipment by the contractor, we move order directly. I would recommend that the town approve the proposal from Intech Engineering and allow me to proceed with this project.
Then we got some recommendations on other places where they put this in?
I don't have a list here. I can get a list.
Well, I think we need a list to see.
I think they had, I think they outlined at the meeting, they had four to five different locations, they've done similar projects.
Well, I'd ask to see that, some of the recommendations from other areas, because this is new to us, so. Okay, do I have a motion to accept?
I make motion second.
Second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay. Is that it?
Thank you.
Okay, I don't have any old business. Joe?
Old business? Um, yeah. I actually spoke with the executive director for the YMCA today and I was curious, Lewis, he had mentioned to me about a temporary above ground line that he was discussing with the county. Were you made aware of that or any of that conversation?
No.
Because he was saying they had 900 kids there this past weekend and the sewer problems getting out of hand. So I was just curious if anyone had mentioned.
Turned out they jammed, that's.
I, I know, and that's why.
That's why they probably discussed it with the county.
Right. But we were discussing with the county, other options for a plan and I was just curious, this never came up. So nothing. And I guess someone else will bring up the other thing I had, so. That's all for old business.
Only thing I have to, to add, so, basically, we know that Craig Trossell retired after 37 years of experience here in the town and certainly he has a vast of knowledge. Will there ever, in your estimate or guesstimate, the need to have him come back as a consultant with some issues or some problems or some knowledge or some mysteries that we may confront and that we're not aware of? I know a lot of instances where people work for certain companies and what have you, even though that person has given just duty to the job and they retired, there's times when they are asked to come back to either give opinions or give an idea or something. Do you see, foresee that?
I will contact Mr. Trossel and see if he'd be interested in providing any consulting services to the town, then I can answer your question. Never spoke to him about that.
Okay, thanks. So the need be, might be that possible. Thanks.
Okay. Old business.
Yes, I think it would be under old business. At our last meeting, I think we had proposed a change, made a motion and approved a change to the election date. And what I would like to do, I think I expressed my concerns for that, being that the election change kind of forced in the middle of the election change, I would affect not only my campaign, but it would affect any, any other individual that would be interested in, in running, as well as other dates and notifying the residents and so forth. And we come to find out there are many other dates that may be affected as well. So what I would like to do with that said, and even running, running through the, the actual dates of, of the budget, because I know that was a concern voting on the budget. As far as it goes, my understanding that the, the budget will be scheduled for introduction on the 21st. The adoption will be scheduled for June 4th. And at that time, you know, I guess the way the, the meeting would go forth is that we would vote on it at the, with the June 4th meeting and then the new members, if there are any new members, would be sworn in. So at this time, it, it really wouldn't affect our voting on the budget, but I also respected and appreciated the fact that we need to possibly discuss having the opportunity to educate new members further and having more time for that. But what I would like to do is make a motion to rescind the previous motion that was presented and approved and rescind it and then table it for discussion at a workshop on a non-election year.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second rescinding the vote.
Okay, have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Motion carried.
I have a comment.
That's, that's a good, um, um, motion that you made to rescind that. And again, that was basically to try to see if we can do something to involve in new elected, if, if the new elected officials were in. But like I said, I have no problem with it and even though you say for a non-election year, I think every year it's going to be election year, but maybe we can think about that even after the new election, I mean, after election's over, that if new 20 people were in, then we have time to do it at that time so that it doesn't affect anybody. So, you know, I have no problem with the motion.
And I also want to say, when we figured out the date between advertising, there were several emails going back in point, I don't know if anybody saw them. Once Lewis sent us the dates, then we realized the date would be May 6th. It was too close to what the original date was. So it's just, it's not, we shouldn't have done it at all.
With, with, with that said, did the people or did the parties that brought the motion forth and they're going to have to go through the process of Robert rules of order and rescind that? If that's what you're going to do?
There was comments made after the, the motion was made and it was through our town administrator to find out what exactly would take place. And even though the thought came to mind, there was a lot of things that would have to take place before election that wouldn't allow us enough time to make the changes anyway.
I realize.
And that's one reason why, I mean, I'm standing behind the motion that was made. So as far as rescinding, I have no problem rescinding the vote.
Well, that has to be done in order for this to, in order for this to be carried out for what you want tonight. So the person who brought, made that motion has to rescind that.
Okay. Does that make his right?
The actual person that made the motion.
The person that brought the motion has to rescind that motion.
I didn't think that was in Robert's rules.
Yes, it is. As, as a group, you can't collectively do that if you have the motion that you brought forward, those persons name it, has to rescind it.
We do not follow Robert's rules.
Yeah.
We have never elected to follow Robert's rules.
But whether it's Robert's rules or not, and don't get me wrong.
But, but, Bill, I understand what you're saying.
Norman.
I did make the motion to have it rescinded.
The motion was approved. It's enforced. Your voting not necessarily rescind it, but to change that decision.
Yeah, but his wording was.
Motion had been voted on, then you'd have to have someone rescind the motion.
You understand what I'm saying?
It was voted on and approved.
Yeah.
So it has to be rescinded, which you're.
Right. And if it's recent.
So he can rescind it or does the people, original people have to rescind what they're asking?
What he's asking.
I think that if, if in fact you have a motion that's still on the floor, the original person has to move to rescind it.
That's what I just said.
Yes, it was on the floor. But it's not on the floor anymore, it was voted and approved.
Right.
Yeah, but they're coming back to rescind it, to bring it back to rescind it.
Rescinding is a word that you're using. I think you're going to have to change what you did. You have to vote, you want to rescind it. Well, then.
Do what you want to do.
Should the proper, you're legal counsel, so I want to make sure it's done right. So should, should the proper statement be a move to dismiss?
If I'm correct, you're supposed to ask for it to be rescinded.
I did.
I think you can do a motion to change the election date back where it was. That'll take care of it.
Just going to say rescind it.
I will make a motion to put the election date back to the original May 27th date for the fourth Tuesday of May.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
So it's corrected now?
Right. Okay. All right. Very good. Okay. I really don't have anything. Mayor Joe, anything?
Yeah.
Nothing?
No.
Hey, Louis, please convey to the Department of Public Works, I think that they did an outstanding job with the snow that we've had. I remember sitting on the board in previous year with even a lesser amount of snow, people were always complaining about what they did or didn't do as far as cleanup and certainly, I don't think many of us heard any complaints given the volume of, of snow that we've had. So please convey my gratitude and I guess the rest of the board too, if they concede.
Absolutely, I'd say the same. I saw them out there working and communicated with them, they stopped and talked and any issues they had, it was, it did a great job, I think, a good job.
And I can verify what I've said because I was out there with them and they, they really were working. In fact, I had to tell some of the guys, hey, go get a cup of coffee, I mean, they were out there really working hard. I mean, it was coming down pretty good. So, yeah, tell Dan, great job, Public Works.
Michelle mentioned that on top of them doing a good job, they didn't ruin any cars or any, provided properly in the process, which is good.
No, I did get some comments about how they did, the roads are not getting back on the sidewalks, so.
That is not an easy job, Brian, trying to do those.
No, it's not, not an easy job. So, okay. You done, Chuck? You have all you had?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Ron?
Ron Wardrop.
Go ahead and push it to, yeah, bring it down to you.
242 Douglas Street. I can't get used to this thing. I, I thought for a minute there I was in Washington, you know, the thing over the forty-five. First of all, I'd like to, I'd like to commend all the commissioners, the town attorney, the head chief. You guys are doing a good job. Very good job. Mr. Piner, if he's not aware, I'm going to do this, but I'm going to do it anyhow. We, last week, he was, he come out, not to my house, but to his daughter's house. And he was out there and shoveling snow. And I know his daughter and son-in-law, if I'm correct, he had a, an accident and he sort of incapacitated, so Mr. Piner come out there and shoveled the snow. To me, that's a wonderful father. A good man to do that. I mean, it was, it was bad. He got to a certain area and he looked at it and he didn't say too much, but it's in front, was in front of the mailboxes, they're, you know, right near where his daughter lives. I think, you know, I lived in Michigan and I never told this before, but I shoveled, I shoveled as a kid a lot of snow, believe me, a lot of snow. But later in life, I, I had a job as a resident manager of 752 apartments. So I know how to plow snow. Trust me, I know how to plow snow. And for the life of me, I can't figure out, when they come in, I guess it's a contractor that's shoveling in there or plowing in there in Douglas Village, or is that the town or?
That's town.
The town does that or a contractor? I was led to believe it was a contractor. Okay, well, they, he has no idea how to plow snow. No idea whatsoever. I mean, just to run a strip down where the curb, where the curb starts before the blacktop, comes, he comes in and sort of the middle of the road, runs up and then he comes down, goes to the cul-de-sac, goes into the cul-de-sac, turns around, comes back and takes another sweep. Consequently, all the snow is in, in, in front of the homes, the townhouses there, and it could be, the snow we had, it was piled up pretty, pretty good, you know? And I'm 72 years old, soon to be 73, you know, proud of that, you know? But I sure don't want to get out there and I had to. Trust me, I had to get out there and shovel and shovel and shovel along with my son-in-law and to, just to get that dug out of there. I, I, you know, if he would run, it may not snow again this year, I don't know. You know, but he needs some lessons, whoever does that plowing in there needs lessons. Have no respect for the people that live in that, in that area. He did a better job in Windsor Village than what he did on Douglas Street. I don't get that. You know? That was one of the things I wanted to bring up. The other thing is, there's at least six homes in there now that are empty. Okay? Four, what do you call that when they?
Vacant or foreclosed?
Foreclosure, okay. Well, Fannie Mae took over the one house December, so I did a little investigation on this thing here, what's going on, you know? Because there's nobody to shovel their snow on the sidewalks. Okay? Correct me if I'm wrong, but that sidewalk, does that not belong to the city? That's city property.
The town took care of that, I'm pretty sure that it was, when it had some damaged sidewalks, the town came up and replaced that, so I'm pretty sure.
As far as the sidewalk goes. But as far as the snow that's piled up onto the sidewalk to, to, and I live at 242, which is a, a half a block or a little more than that, from the mailboxes where I retrieve my mail from, you know? So I gotta go out on the street unless my, well, my area is clear and I defy to come over and look where I'm, I guarantee you, you agree with me, it's clear. It's clear. But the sidewalks aren't, so they had a note on the door of the one unit and I called, that's how I found out that Fannie Mae took over that house on December 13th of last year. The lady that, the management company that manages that property claims that Fannie Mae will have a realtor come out and put a sign up to either sell it or rent, whatever they, you know, whatever they do. But somebody's responsible for that snow or the grass being cut. I mean, the town, doesn't the town find a person if they don't cut that along in a certain time or whatever, and you have to come out and do it? You know? Am I correct there? And the same goes for the grass. You know, if the grass isn't cut, it isn't maintained. I, I just don't understand it. My, my logic behind it, because Mr. Piner asked me, is there a civic associate, he stopped quick for some reason, I guess he figured there wasn't, okay? I don't know what it would take, but if, I'd, I'd like to personally do that. I don't know what I'd have to go through, I'm not a politician, I don't think it'd be a politician to do that, but something's got to be done there. Not only for the snow and the grass, but the drugs are still going on, big time. Big time. And as much as when they park down in the off parking, the extra parking, they do deals down there, I know what's going on, I wasn't born last night, I know what's going on. Okay? They leave needles, you know, some kids are going to get one of them needles, get HIV or something. But nobody goes down there, nobody goes down. Now, I haven't seen a police guard down there in the last.
Six months?
Unless they're serving a warrant or whatever, you know what I'm saying? And all those drug dealers come on, you know, I.
Do you call 911 when you see that happen?
And they got garbage all over the place, you know, they, they, they sit there to eat McDonald's hamburgers and chicken and it falls stuffs out in the, in the parking area there.
Are you talking about the mailbox or are you talking about the cul-de-sac that's on the bar?
No, no, by the mailbox, the main mailbox where, where it is at, I guess that's both Doug, I guess they're both Douglas Street. Douglas Street is a, is a continuance of Douglas Street.
And you call 911 when you see this?
I don't, I don't call, I, no. I don't call, I, no, no.
Well, we have to call 911, because then it's on record, because our police, once that they see there's, if you can call ten times a day.
I'm supposed to sit up, I'm supposed to sit up to two, three o'clock in the morning?
No, 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 I'm not saying that, but I'm saying if you see something happening and you suspect, please call 911, because the more our officers get the calls to that area, they know it's a hotspot and then they will be there more often.
Well, I've said enough, if, if they don't know it's a hotspot by now, you know, I, listen, I, I learned a long time ago, a long time ago, if you know something's going on, you know something's going on and you say something about it, it's like the mafia. You know something and it's going, I'm telling you straight up right now, the way I look at it. And you, you tell it'll get your graveyard dead. Don't think that people don't retaliate, because it happens every day. I don't need that kind of thing, my wife is seventy years old and I, I, I'd be in jail for murder because I'd shoot somebody in the face across from my wife going to the mailbox or whatever. And I don't even have a gun. Is there, I mean, it's just ridiculous, Joe, is, what's going on there? It's just, it's just absolutely ridiculous, driving me crazy, driving my wife crazy, my family, you know, and the neighbors. People that are, two of the people, and I know this for a fact, have actually turned their homes over back to the bank. My next-door neighbor. Turned it back to the bank, because he and him and his wife are afraid to live there. He actually turned it back to his wife.
I, I can tell you one thing, Ron, that, uh, the street crimes unit is doing a heck of a job and, um, if this brought to their attention, we can certainly, with, uh, the captain there can direct them and let them know about that situation, because they're all over, so I mean, they can concentrate on that area.
I, I, I know that, but it, I'm just afraid that somebody's gonna, sooner or later, it's gonna get there. And don't you think that basketball, I don't reprimand anybody for playing basketball, but I know there's a town ordinance says that it's in the street, they gather you get thir, like, uh, thirty kids, adults, and they're doing drug, they're, they're, the kids, there are people playing basketball, but there's they're dealing drugs and them kids are, are out there, and, uh, this goes on, you'd have to be there. You'd have to be there to see it, just me telling you is not gonna do it. I'm not saying you personally, but if somebody has to be there to see it. If I had to call 911, I will, but I will not go out and confront him.
Well, it'd be good if you did call 911, it would help.
You know, I, I, I think if it just, if, I think if they've made a bust one time, it would get, it, it would get by. What's the cars that come there from?
Delaware.
Delaware, you got construction companies coming in there.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, the captains.
Who knows what's going on?
Captains are aware of it now.
Shovel now.
Mr. Ron, I, I hear you.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
That's all right, yeah. Mr. Ron, I hear you loud and clear and I know it's a, it's a tough decision to make, but, I mean, I, I have to concur with the, um, with the, uh, Mayor and, and Mary Ju, uh, Commissioner Lewinsky. It, it's very, very vital to make that 911 call. Uh, if it, is there a way to do it anonymously, anonymously?
Yeah.
Yeah, you tell them we're being anonymous.
Okay, okay, because it's just, it's a matter of documentation, actually, am, am I right?
Yes.
It's kind of a matter of documentation.
Sure.
About the issues out there, but I know it's a tough choice to make and, and, and those, those issues have to be resolved in a lot of different ways, you know? Making property issues, um, we have to, we have to do something about that as a town, maybe ordinance.
You know, I, I plan on being there until the day I die, you know, I mean, I, it's a, it's a.
And you have a right to be.
You know, and, and, and I, I think, I personally think that, I, I know enough people in there that are on a pretty good rapport with, if we did indeed have some sort of civic association, you know, uh, I don't know what I'd have to do, I, who would I have to talk to about that, but, but.
Literally, you'd have to get ev, each and every homeowner out there, but you'd have to get a, a letter or like a certified letter or something in that effect, in order to try to.
Get a majority?
Okay, well, I wouldn't have any problem with that.
No, basically, all you have to do is you get, get all the residents involved, have a, have a meeting amongst yourselves and then if everybody's on board, then you can get yourself incorporated.
Okay.
And then, um, you can go from there and then, then you'll be recognized as a civic association there and get the people to stand behind you, get yourself a course like your president, secretary.
Just for some reason, you know, I just think it would help, you know?
Well, if you can get the residents behind you and then, um, start one.
Well, I can't.
I've started numerous ones and that's how it usually works.
Because it isn't the residents that are, you follow me? It isn't the residents that are doing the drugs, it's people that's coming from, why ain't broken?
I know. All right, well, what you can do is stand, stand firm for the residents.
I certainly don't refute what you said, because, um, I've been over there when there have been offices there and, you know, there, there's always the other extreme, you also have people over there that live there complaining about the police over there harassing their people, which, you know, the police are over there doing the job.
Well, I, I.
So, you know, they have been over and I have seen that, maybe not at the time that you've seen that.
Yeah.
And certainly that specific area is problematic, because not only did you have the basketball court and you have the people hanging, you also have people that bring the Tri-Scans out there two and three days early, they leave it there and if you live in front of the Tri-券 area, it's bad, because that's right at the mailbox. So you're not the only one that's concerned about it, there's other people as well.
The house is empty next door, would you like to move there?
No, I wouldn't, I, I, I've seen it.
Right, right.
And I can understand the story.
I'm just trying to joke in there.
Oh, I understand that.
I think that was, okay, all right.
One of the things, one of the things.
What about that basketball court?
We'll take care of it with the, we can check the, with the captain.
Now, it's on the street, see, because of the snow, you know, and all they're doing, I, there's mailboxes at that, where that thing is. I don't care about it being there, but when you get thirty kids out there, you know what I mean, and you pull in and some of them will stand.
They don't wanna move.
They won't move.
And you're right, and that basketball court is out throughout the day, because you have one group there and they done playing, then you have some, maybe some older people will come and they are, so it's just a constant thing, so call 911.
Okay, that's it.
One of the things I wanted to follow up for you, um, was about the mailbox situation, and I do know that, um, the plow was about maybe five to six feet away from the mailbox and that's one of the concerns that, um, I'd like to follow up with either the manager of the property and I think I told you that.
Yeah.
And I will follow up, um, the key thing is, is at least the mailboxes need to be cleared out so that you can be able to have access to that, um, line or plow, which is, should have been an easy job, but I noticed that there was a vehicle from that area, from the management department and that's one of the concerns that, why I cut it off, I wasn't sure whether they were supposed to plow or not and I said I will talk to the, uh, the manager and I'll follow up on that, it wasn't just because my daughter lives out there, it's just because all the mailboxes were blocked up, so I'll follow up on that for you, sir.
Okay, Ron, thanks a lot, thank you. Mr. Lemon?
One oh-three-one, I believe. I wanna talk about the budget, and I sat in on your meeting last Wednesday and I realize that the budget is a work in process, that this was just, uh, this was the first shot out of the gate and that you will be taking a look at it and I wanted to make a couple comments on the, uh, the police department budget. The proposal from the police department was to, uh, add the three positions that were not, that were taken out of last year's proposed budget. I didn't hear any justification for those three positions, all I heard said was they were in the prior budget and taken out, now I wanna put them back in. Uh, that's not a justification. If somebody says, well, we're gonna reduce crime by ten percent or something, that's something else, but the problem, the, uh, so you have that, then you have two, uh, so you have those three positions that were taken out of last year's proposed budget, or not in this year's budget and then you have two other open positions right now, you have the, uh, open position of the chief of police and you have the, uh, open, you have another open position. So, from the standpoint of way the budget, uh, was proposed last week, there's, uh, five open positions. It seemed to me, the fact that these three, uh, positions were proposed to go back in the budget shows a lack of understanding of the need to control and reduce the costs here in the town of Elkhorn. And la, last year, uh, last year's budget, uh, we took nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars out of the, uh, the town fund to balance the budget. So the budget wasn't balanced on the basis of, uh, income and expenditures. Expenditures were higher than the income that the town was taking. So I view the police department budget as very critical in this, uh, in this regard because of the big numbers involved, among other things, and I, I'm bringing this up because there's an opportunity now, uh, in this part of the budget anyway, is to, is to shrink it to back where, back to where it actually is right now. There would be no, there would be no change into what, uh, the town is operating under right now as a police department. And I realize that at some point you will pick a chief, but if you pick a chief, then it seems to me, uh, if that comes from within the department, then some other position will be left open and there, and there should be a shuffling to keep the positions the same. The position count is what I'm trying to say, so, uh, and, and, uh, the other thing that I didn't hear in the, in the, uh, in the workshop was, which is coming up, is that there's going to be, uh, actuarial costs coming up and, and, um, what was warned about last year, that when the actuarial costs come up with the fiscal fifteen budget, uh, that's gonna have a, will probably have an impact on the budget and increase the cost too. Now, if you have less, uh, if you don't fill these positions, uh, that will help you get over that hump, so I, I mentioned that. The other thing, uh, I'd like to talk about also, same, uh, well, so what I'm, gotta refer to my notes, what I, what I think should be done with the police department is that, that the organization and operations department should be looked at for the, uh, cost savings that I'm talking about and other cost savings that wouldn't even occur to me, but then I think that's very important, this is where the biggest dollars in the budget are. So, the other thing is, is you have the police support services, I don't know where we are on that, I know that, um, when the, the, the town now has a nine-eleven service, which is in the budget and, uh, that's, um, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and that's a critical part of the budget, I'm sure that will continue to be in the budget. But then the question is, is why, uh, I, I would think that somebody should look at the other six people in this department and find out if we need six people to do all this paperwork, whatever it is. I don't know what it is, it's, this is called police support services, there's two secretaries and four office associates. So, I would think that that's another area that should be looked at to see if we need, if we need that kind of a headcount to perform the services, now what I don't know is, is if, is whether the headcount is the same before nine-eleven or it's reduced after the nine-eleven came in, I don't know that. So that's, but, uh, that, I think that's, this, this whole area is, uh, a serious area, so I'm bringing it up now, I think I'm repeating, but I'm bringing it up now because I know that you're working on this budget and I know that, uh, last year you made changes after it was proposed and I think this is really serious to take a serious look at this and, uh, to see if, uh, it can be organized in such a way as to, as to, as to maintain the head reduction that we're operating under now and to look at the support group and see if we really need that much support. And I don't know whether we do or not, I'm not saying I know anything about the group, I, I don't even know, I've never even seen it, I don't even know who works there, I'm just saying I think it's important to look at it.
Okay.
That's my message.
Thank you.
Good comments.
DJ?
Commissioner, Mayor, Mayor's service, DJ Gammian, I, Warford. Uh, just two quick questions. Uh, with the contract with Severn Trent, it's my understanding over the last, uh, few years, Severn Trent has given us money back on product that they didn't use. That ranges anywhere from what I've seen, somewhere around forty to fifty-five thousand dollars, is that about right? Um, since they're giving us two hundred thousand dollars towards a project, is that our money? Or they still wanna be giving us money back for the product that they don't use? I could, looking back through some of the videos and stuff, I couldn't find anything with that was actually, it, it was brought up a couple times, but it was never, it was never said publicly that somebody's gonna keep watch, that actually the X amount of dollars was gonna be given back to us because they didn't use that, that much product. Who's gonna keep track of that?
Well, that would be, that's their money, number one.
There, there's a reconciliation after the end of each year, they're, they've got an odd year from November first to October thirty, or seven first to November third, uh, whereby when they, in fact, they all be, uh, expenses for testing and chemical fees and other sort of things, then there's a reconciliation, utilities, electricity, there's a reconciliation if they've met the standard or they've exceeded the standard and then there's a sharing and, and any overage or underage with the town. So, the two hundred thousand dollars is, did not change those terms, the two hundred thousand dollars was an effective grant from them for extending the contract to do from five years to twenty-twenty-three. So that has nothing to do with the current formula, which is unchanged, it's additional five years.
I was just curious, I didn't find, find anything on that, of like, on that. And forgive my ignorance on some of the local, uh, small ignorance on some of the local rules as far as commissioners being able to answer questions or not answer questions, I, uh, I'm not versed on, on every small rule. But my question would be, the decision two weeks ago to change May twenty-seventh to April eighth, was that done on a whim or was that done discussion prior to? Either, either way, sure, um, what, what check and balance is in place for these policies to make sure that, that me wanting to run has the opportunity, because that error, and, and thank you for reversing that error, but that error was done and if people weren't paying attention, then it would have continued and I wouldn't have the opportunity. So again, what, who's responsible as far as the check and balance?
I, I can answer to that, um, that, that came up as a budget question at the time, not knowing all the legal changes that would have to make and the impact it would, uh, have on the people that were running for the election at that time. And like I said, I apologize that, even if it was during the year I was running for election, it still would have been an, an option brought up and after bringing it up, it opened up more than just a date. It, it opened up changes to the code and, and things that weren't, uh, even the election, um, department would have had to be notified, I mean, all those things came up as a question and then it turned into something further than that and, again, if it's a, a question and it turned out to a mistake, I apologize, but it wasn't done for any other reason than for the, make it fair for people that were involved with the budget. Didn't have anything to do with election, who was in election and what's coming up for the election, it was based on a question, so.
A vote that comes across, um, that, that, that an amendment to the charter is what had happened, correct? Um, it, and if, it doesn't stand, because according to the charter rules, you have to have X period of time for, for public notification and such, so if an error is made as far as a vote, just from my knowledge, an error is made as far as a vote, um, does it really need to have an amendment to change it back? It shouldn't exist to begin with, should it not?
It was voted on, put into, into place and it had to have some kind of an action in order to change.
Against the charter, it's still, it, it wasn't the rule.
Well, whether the legal, they wanna follow the procedures needed that are in the charter.
In order to.
They could have filed two, ten, twelve days, and they, and brought that date back, it would be, everything was good.
But, but it wouldn't have been able...
Second thought, they said...
I got them.
There's not the wise to do so.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, hearing nothing else, motion to adjourn.
So moved, sir.
Have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.